All right, well, to reconvenienced the new session for the Amory Board of Education, our regular meeting tonight, and for our first thing, we will have the pledge of allegiance. Things clear.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next, we will have our consent agenda items. Who has those?
And I have the vouchers this month, so I would make the recommendation we approve the consent agenda items.
Has a motion, and a second?
Second.
Are all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All right, here we go. Community comments, we have a couple, so I'll read the guidelines. Welcome to this meeting of the School District of Amory Board of Education. We are pleased that you are interested in the work of the school board. You may address the board only during community comments time on the board meeting agenda. Any resident, district employee, or guest invited by the board may make comments about any decision, policy, or board meeting agenda items. The following guidelines have been established for addressing the Amory Board of Education. For those wishing to speak before the board, a sign up sheet will be available prior to the start of the meeting. If the topic noted on the sign up sheet is deemed to be out of order, the presiding board member will inform the person wishing to speak prior to the start of the meeting. Community comments must pertain to a board decision, policy, or board meeting agenda item. Common time is limited to five minutes per person, however, the time limit may be increased or decreased at the discretion of the presiding board member. Political speeches which are not materially related to board decisions, policies adopted by the board, or are not about a board meeting agenda item are strictly forbidden. Personal criticism among members of the Board of Education or employees of the school district are also strictly forbidden. Please stand to be recognized. After being recognized, state your name and municipality where you live for the record. The board normally receives citizen input and does not respond or debate. If there is a need for an answer or response to a concern or issue, the district administrator or one of the other administrators will get back to you with a response. If your concern requires board action, it may be placed on the agenda of a future board meeting. Please leave your name and contact information if you wish to be contacted by a member of the board or the district administrator regarding your community comment. All right, so I have Margie Vaja, but you didn't write down what you were going to talk about?
Oh, it's about the three proposals on the football.
Okay, athletics?
Okay.
All right, please.
Okay, the first thing I would like to do is to thank Mr. Dierfler for his phone call back to me the next morning explaining all the numbers, and because of that, I have gone out to the public. Many people who were questioning everything and negative about it, many have turned around positively because of what you told me, because he explained the numbers to me, and there is to be no tax increases because of this. How, you know, you explained the 750,000 that's coming in and due to the referendum facility, big ticket items are being taken care of, so there's some money from that that can go to it. The loan that's going to be paid off July 1st, so you're just going to extend that for another 20 years, so that goes into it. From this year, on that $231,000 loan, you have 132,000, you're realizing a difference that could also be used on it. And then also explain, because I know that the referendum money that you had said could be used for some stuff, you can't just use it for anything because people voted for a certain thing, but you can use it for facility updates, which could be your LED and your grading and everything. So according to all that, you do have the money. The only question I have, then I, as I read through the three options, my question is on number three, the con you say is funding. And so according to what we talked about, there wouldn't be a funding issue. So I didn't know why a con was put in for funding.
That was a document created by Kraus Anderson, not by the school district of Amory.
Okay.
And six million is more than four million. That's the only reason it would be a con. But as you'll see as part of the conversation tonight, it's not an issue to fund this project at $6 million.
Right.
If you stick around for that, you'll see that.
Yeah. And also, you know, there were some people in the public who, you know, they have talked to people at the Baldwin School District, which Mr. Dierfler explained to me, theirs was a referendum, not an outright loan situation. So that's why people were upset over things like that. The one thing that I tried to tell people, and I think that if these numbers could be put out so the public really understands, we live in a time of chaos federally, world. You go to your financiers and they tell you, oh, there's going to be a recession, you know, the markets are going to drop, you know, and so there's all these worries. So if people don't understand these numbers, and they drive by and see this beautiful sports facility, they're going to start to wonder what's going on. And I trust all you. I am one who's here to apologize for not having gone to referendum meetings. I just believe you all know what you're doing, and that you're doing the best for all of us. You're not here to better just yourself, you're here for the community, and you're going to do the best you can for us. And so I want to give kudos out to you, and that's one reason I wasn't at, and I should have been. I should show enough interest all the time to listen to everything you have to say. So I am here to thank you for what you do, and I think you do do the best you can for all of us. And I'm not sure a new football field is going to bring in a whole bunch of people into our community, I'm not looking at that. I happen to have an apple orchard, and it was part of what I got when I purchased the place east of here. And all I do is give apples away. And I happen to have a lot of homeschooling families who come for these apples. And I just can't believe how many homeschoolers we have in this community. So the last one who came had two of them. And one thing maybe the school would like to look at in depth a little bit more was almost every one of them have a child with a learning disability of some kind that they felt the need wasn't getting met enough, that they pulled their kids out and they're homeschooling them. So I don't know how big of an issue it is, but it might be something that if we're losing kids to homeschooling, we kind of need to find out why, because I believe it's a good school district. I believe, I happen, even though I don't look like it, I was very big in sports, so I fully am for sports. I was on the state basketball championship team, for God's sakes, I was the roving forward. So it's, I'm all for sports, and I believe sports played a big part in my life. And so I, but I want, and you pointed out to me that all sports have been looked at fairly. I mean, there are football, there's soccer, there's baseball, but everybody, wrestling, weightlifters, everybody has a fair share at having their abilities focused on. And I thank you for that also. So I'm here more or less to give you kudos, I'm not here to defund, I'm here to support you in whatever you decide. Just don't raise my taxes. Oh, I do have to apologize. I have to apologize. I said my taxes went up by $900. I was mistaken. They only went up by 858. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Margie. Next, we have William Veerkan.
Address, these guys still do that?
What are you going to talk to us?
The extracurricular activities.
Okay.
So, good evening. My name is William Veerkan. I'm here tonight to better understand what's the school district's policy is on barring non-Amory students from participating in extracurricular activities. For instance, the school district permits students in the district who are homeschooled to participate in such events, such as athletics. In fact, the school district's policy on extracurricular activities appears to be specifically written to include homeschooled children when it states, "Extracurricular activities shall be available for students in the district." I also note that that policy has been in existence since 1993. I'm not clear on how the school district defines extracurricular activities, or rather whether extracurricular activities excluded events such as student dances. As some of you may know, the Amory Middle School recently hosted a dance. My daughter, Ameris, is 13 years old, a former student here in Amory. My wife, Melissa, was previously active in the IPO committee and was previously involved in planning and hosting of dances such as these. So when my daughter asked if she could go to the dance to see her friends, we heartedly agreed. After all, we believe the dance would be considered an extracurricular activity and that her daughter would be welcome to participate. On her way to the school, we saw the bright lights of the school board board saying, "All are welcome." After we dropped our daughter off, she entered the school, paid the $5 entry fee, and soon after entering, she saw Ms. Costanic, who was one of her favorite former past teachers, and began a conversation with her. Shortly after, however, she would need to leave the dance and call her parents to come pick her up. There was no indication that my daughter had done anything disruptive or caused any harm to anyone, or otherwise preventing anyone from being able to enjoy the festivities. There is no indication that she had violated any school policy of any kind that would justify her removal from the dance. Remember this, this is a 13-year-old girl wanting to do 13-year-old-girl things with her 13-year-old girlfriends. Our daughter responded to this in the way you would expect a typical 13-year-old to respond. She was incredibly embarrassed, ashamed, confused, and angry. So I'm here to understand exactly where the school stands on enforcement of this particular policy, and to understand whether the school dance qualifies as an extracurricular activity or event for the school district. If it does, then I would like to know whether my daughter did anything to justify being removed from the dance. If she did not, I would like the school district to provide me with specific reasons as to why my daughter was removed, whether those reasons are related to my daughter or not. If there was no bias for her removal, I would like to know if the school district will be clarifying its policy on extracurricular activities. To clarify that the school dances are not considered extracurricular. If the school district has no intentions of revising its policy, I would like to know who is responsible for ensuring that employees of the school districts comply with this policy. Then I would like to know when the school district intends to take down all its signage indicating "all are welcome," or change it to "only those that are enrolled in the Amory School District are welcome." Because if the school fails to act in this manner, in a responsible, appropriate way, then it may as well simply acknowledge that it will enforce policies based on factors that have nothing to do with educational children, and that it has no business claiming to itself or the public that all are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And for those that...
Say thank you, say thank you to the last one.
I did say thank you. And for those that want the policy for extracurricular activities, I have it here for you.
You just want to pass it down the line? I'll just hand it all over to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to print one for you, Sean.
I got it, they're all online, I got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You following my questions? Does anybody want this?
I'll take it.
Why don't you give your questions to Dr. Dierfler, and he will attempt to answer them.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The other thing, the other thing when people come up here and speak, I would appreciate the head nodding, back and forth, the denials. Be clear with this, it's difficult to go up here and speak, for everybody. So from members of the audience or whatnot, I appreciate those who are having full attention, but for those who are shaking their heads in opposition or something like that, I would appreciate you don't.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our administrative department reports.
All right, updates from the high school. On September 28th, we had our district-wide youth rec fair at the high school for all sports, all age levels, all programs, winter, spring, and fall. The high school part took in our academic and career planning in-service in coordination with the hospital this year, and went over there and learned about some opportunities for our kids. I don't know if many of you are aware, but the hospital recently lowered their age level, reduced it from 18 years to 16-year-olds can now work at the hospital in some jobs, and that had been a barrier in previous years. And so now we have a number of kids who've been able to get into some awesome opportunities, hopefully open up some more opportunities in the healthcare field for them, so we're excited about that. Like the other places, we had parent-teacher conferences, ours are focused on more academic and career planning, but parents can always ask questions about how their kids are doing in school as well. We have hit the next phase of our remodel. I would say it's probably been a little rockier this time on the demolition side of things. Previously, we were lucky they were able to do a lot of the demo before the kids came in. This phase now, the first five, six days of the next phase of the demo, a little bit louder, but we're getting by, and soon the rebuild phase in this section rooms will happen, and that's not nearly as loud. All of our sports teams are officially done for the fall season, so winter sports will kick off here in about two weeks. One thing that wasn't on the agenda that I should have had on here just to report to you guys, all the safety drills have been completed in all four buildings, and I'll be turning that information into the Wisconsin DOJ as required by law of those being completed. Future events, going back to the Amory Hospital and Clinic, they are sponsoring an event called the Healthcare Zombie Crawl Day later this week, and we've got a number of students who are going to be participating in that. I'm hoping to go down there and, I don't know what the whole zombie crawl thing is, but I know I get to see a lot of different career opportunities, so I'm going to go down with some of our kids for that. We're sending a bunch of students to the National FFA Convention in Indianapolis. We have the end of term one coming up on October 30th, that's next Monday. We've got the school musical Annie running next week, Thursday, November 2nd through Sunday the 5th. I recommend you guys get out there and see what amazing talent we have on stage there. We've got a Veterans Day program coming up on November 10th, that's a Friday, Veterans Day is a Saturday this year. Our program will be at 8:30 in the morning, followed by our Veterans Day breakfast, following that the SCLA sponsors. And then on November 16th, we have our practice ACT tests for grades nine through 11, where we do some initial testing in the fall as a way of prepping for our spring tests. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, at the middle school, we just ended our second term last week, and our students are busy getting used to and transitioning to their second applied arts class. We held some peer tutor training and some peer mediation training last week, and I appreciate those advisors taking times to work with those kids and get them trained. We have Drama Rama Festival coming up on November 4th, and the students will be competing in Prescott, and we have teams from, I think there's like seven or eight teams between the intermediate and the middle school. We have a lot of different organizational meetings, we have some PLC meetings coming up, quite a few of them. This Wednesday, our social studies department, and later November 8th, our math department, and then we have a district, or a building-wide PLC meeting, which is really working on standards and how we, our students are performing to our standards, and it gives those teachers some time to meet departmentally, to break down data, and to take a look at things and set goals. We have a Warrior Way celebration on October 27th, which is a way to kind of continue to celebrate the year and how our kids are doing. Let's see, we have in-service coming up on November 6th, and that's a full in-service day, and we're going to be sitting down at the middle school and further doing item analysis off the forward test. We do have the forward test results back, and those have now become public. We do have some report card scores that are also out, but those are still embargoed, but we're allowed to get in as a school and break into them and really start looking at which specific standards our students excelling on, and which standards do our students show some struggles on. We have a three-year, it will be known a three-year item analysis to take a look at improvement goals for the building. And we have District Technology Committee coming up on November 8th, and that's going to be really interesting as we talk about the future of technology in the district and replacing machines down the road and how that will all play out. We have an Essential Elements class coming up on Monday the 13th for new teachers. For those that aren't new, if you're a new teacher to the district, we do have classes about once a month that talk a lot about the way that Amory does certain things, specific laws that teachers need to be aware of. This one's going to be mostly on special ed, 504 and PBIS strategies. We have a big fall band concert, high school and middle school, on November 14th. And then on November 17th, the big one, we have our eighth grade human growth and development presentation for eighth grade students, and that's when we have two different doctors that come in and present. That's it.
The permission slips gone out for that yet?
Yeah, the permission slips went out about a week and a half ago, I believe, and we've gotten probably close to 50 or 60% of them back already. We have a second round that goes out in a couple of weeks after the due date for the first one.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good evening. A child and youth advocate worker from the Community Referral Agency presented to IS staff here. That's an agency that's just a community support if a need were to arise for our students or our families. We had our first Warrior Way rally that took place on September 28th. It was led by Mr. M., who puts on all of our Warrior Way rallies, so I want to thank him for that. It was a tennis challenge in which students got to answer questions about how you follow the Warrior Way here. So it was a good end to our first month of school. Food for America, so high school FFA students led our third through fifth graders on October 4th through a series of educational literacy events that have to do with farming. Our students here got to go on a hayride to the school farm, they got to do the corn maze, it was a lot of fun. It ended back here in the cafeteria with tasting honey and different things that are made from a farm. Parent-teacher conferences, they went very well here, we had an attendance rate of 99%, which is the highest in my role that I've seen. Parents are allowed to attend by phone or in person. Really, the goal of a parent-teacher conference is to connect with parents in whatever format that looks like to support them. During parent-teacher conferences, our Title I team offered a school-wide parent meeting, so it was an opportunity that we communicated with parents that if any parent in the district, whether your child is served by Title Services or not, they have an opportunity to come into the building and ask questions about Title I and what that looks like. That is written into our school-wide Title I compact, so we met that criteria for the fall. And then finally, a leadership committee that includes Paula and I and Brad. We are attending a training literacy for leaders, so we go to CISA, and from the lens of a leader, we are deep diving into literacy and what does that look like in supporting our students. Some upcoming events, we have our Like Warrior Day Friday, we also have our Halloween Carnival that is coming up, that's always well-attended, that's a great fundraiser for us, that's put on by the IPO on the 31st. So both elementary and the intermediate, we have our Halloween parade on Halloween. I've had some parents ask me if it was on Friday, but it actually takes place on Halloween. So here at the intermediate, it's at 1:45. I want to share with parents that you can make the intermediate parade, and you can still get to the elementary in time if you'd like to watch both of your children. As Tom said, we have teacher in-service on the 6th. We have Teresa Stanley, she was here today, which Paula will talk a little bit about, she will be in district with us again on November 7th. And then something really exciting is our fifth grade news team is actually traveling to WQOW Eau Claire. We have, I believe, 17 students with Mrs. Brayton and Mr. M. that will travel to Eau Claire, and WQOW is giving them a behind-the-scenes tour of what it looks like to film a newscast, so they get to see their green screen room, they get to see their equipment. They are very, very excited. And then finally, our next IPO meeting after the Halloween Carnival will be on November Thank you.
Hello. I'm sorry, my voice is very bad, so bear with me. We've just had a lot going on at elementary school, it's been a great couple of months with us. We finished our safety drills, as Josh had mentioned, we participated in the homecoming parade, which was really a fun time had by all of our ghettos, they love getting those pom-poms out and cheering on their high school friends. Our lean students, K through third grade, leaded our fast bridge assessments on the week of September 25th, and so now that the staff is using that data to create our win groups, our what we need now groups, to be able to do some academic interventions with them. Our kindergarten team did a grand job with their ABC boot camp, you've probably seen some really fun photos of that out on Facebook. They just, they do a great job, they create their vests and their headbands, and they do a lot of work for their ABC boot camp, and the students have a great time presenting that out. They invited their parents in to watch their parade this year, and then to have a snack with them in the cafeteria after, so it was a great parent connection for them. Our media specialist, Annie Brayton, along with her team, planned a spectacular event, and I'll talk more about that in a minute because I have a slide to show about that. But leading up to that barn dance and our corn maze, which was a great partnership with our Amory High School FFA, became a lot of work, and they did a lot of planning and a lot of hard work, and then we came together pretty much as a community on September 30th with the Amory FFA, the Boy Scouts, staff, their families, Keith Anderson, and they just did a great job cleaning up the barn, getting it all ready, and it just turned out spectacular. Those students participated in classes during the day at school in art, music, fayette, and reading, and they decorated with artwork, the barn. They did a lot of reading up on what it is to be in a barn dance, and Mrs. Brayton supplied some reading activities that day in fayette, they played some games and music, they learned how to dance and sing. So it was just a great culmination of events that took place during that time. Excuse me. And our community events, we hosted two LPO meetings since our last board meeting. Many conversations are happening, it's about supporting staff, reading incentive planning, fundraising, family fun nights, playground, and there's a playground grant that we just put in, so hopefully we'll be able to be matched in funds with that to get some new playground equipment out with our referendum stuff, so that'll be great because we'll have a new 4KK playground. We're excited to welcome new people all of the time, and our next meeting is Thursday, September 3rd, November 16th, so I look forward to hosting that and having further discussions on that. So it's been great getting to know all of those new parents on that committee. October 5th, we had our parent-teacher conferences, and that was when we had our fall Title I parent involvement meeting as well, which is like a jazz with our school-wide piece, she has one meeting in her building and I have one in mine, and so that was really great. Carrie Schu, our reading specialist, hosted that and offered some popcorn treat with that, so that was kind of fun for her to do. Second grade students attended their field trip to the Poor Hands Holsteins Farm. This is a great partnership with the Dato family and with the Amory FFA again, they get to go out and learn all about the operations of a farm and have homemade ice cream, so the students always look forward to that every year. Third grade, on October 3rd, kindergarten to third grade made a trip to the apple orchard. They had a great time picking apples, pumpkins, playing on the playground and learning many new apple facts as they did their tours, so they shared just a tremendous amount of wonderful things that they did that day, and they returned. And on October 19th, the day before our barn dance, we had the math committee did a wonderful job putting together a family math night and did glow-in-the-dark bingo, that was just... That was just a fun time all night long. We had a packed cafeteria and a lot of smiles on the faces of kiddos and families and it was a lot of fun. So if you take a look at my PowerPoint, this was our math, our family math night and our instructors, Mrs. Myers, Mr. Miller, Mrs. Wentz, Mrs. Craft and Mrs. Millerman, all got together and really did a, a nice job. Mrs. Hulversen also was in there. She was not there that night, but she did a lot of planning. But yeah, we just had a lot of smiles, a lot of great time for glow-in-the-dark bingo. And then when you lead up to our, our barn dance, you can see the art and the painting, the faces and all the artwork in the back in, in the barn. That barn, Keith can attest to this, had a lot of hay in it, but we baled three loads of hay out of that barn and they just finished cleaning it up and decorating it incredibly. So there was a lot of dancing going on, some sweet potato broom balling going on. The FFA corn maze, again amazing. They had some educational pieces in there for education. Mrs. Brayton shared her books and yeah, it, it's just, it's just great. So in the next slide, you can see all the people. So Chad Hansen is the owner of the barn right across the street that is connected onto our school farm land. So he donated the use of the barn for the day and he was just, you know, just excited to see what we had been doing and setting up and knowing what we were doing for that for kids that day. So that was nice. So yeah, we just have a long list. Amory FFA, Derek Meyer, Power Up donated our, our snacks and they were there doing activities with kids. Matt Carey and his St. Croix Valley Orchestra Trio with Jeanette and Debbie performed all the music to dance as the strings. So we had violins, violas and you see them. So that was amazing. The kids loved that. Renee Anderson, our art teacher, Annie Brayton, our media specialist. She and Amy Scars, our music teacher. Danielle Peterson, our fayette teacher and Jessica Woodcap also in the, in the media center working. So just, I, I tell them, told them all day today, I was just in awe all weekend, just thinking about all the wonderful, great things that we have here, what we have going on and the amazing staff and students and community that we have to just get together and put on something so amazing like this for our, our students. So many, many, many thank yous to all of those people and all of the things that happened. Our upcoming events, October 24th, Author Visit, Scott McGoon is going to be in our cafeteria. That's partnershiped with the Public Library. And then Aaron Soderberg is going to be during the school day, so that will be great. Scott McGoon also is going to present to our students during the school day. And then the Knights of Columbus is partnering with us for our annual Codes for Kids at Lena Elementary for two days, 26 through 7. So that's coming up and they're excited to be able to meet with kids and families over that. The Halloween parade here is at 2:15, so as Jessica said, yes, there's time to see both. CISA H&amp;H Training, November 3rd and on the 7th. We break out into groups of, grade-level groups to be able to do that. CISA Training with Teresa Stanley. So that is fantastic. She's helping us with our ELA, new adoption with Intereading and she's just been amazing support for teachers and trying to make sure that we're getting deep, diving deep into all the resources that we have at them. In-service November 6th. My student services team, Mrs. Benson and Mr. Grams are working on a parent workshop on November 9th. So that's exciting to be doing in our building as well. The teacher in-service and our next LPO meeting, 8:30 on November 6th.
All right, I can attest to the barn dance. It was great and the weather was cooperating wonderfully. It was such a beautiful day, so thanks everyone who put that on. It really was, it was great. Couple updates in student services world. This may or may not be new to some of the board members, but our, in the past, we had access to a school-based mental health grant that was funded through DPI. That was a competitive grant that actually Amory led, you know, among every school district in Wisconsin. We had some of the strongest grant writing. We were funded a couple of different times through that and were awarded and expended a decent amount of money through that program. So kudos to, to all of us and I know Kate, Kate Weisenbeck and Katie Johnson did a lot to push that grant through. And so that's changed to a, just an allocation, a straight allocation based on a formula that the state set up to approximately $31 per pupil. So it's still estimated our cost right now. And you know, what's, a couple of good things about that is it's not a competitive grant process anymore. So we spend a lot of time managing those grants, applying for them and you don't always get funded because they're competitive across a group of districts throughout the state. For example, we have the Transition Readiness Grant. I played a pretty big role in writing that grant. We were funded for one year, re-upped the grant writing process and submitted and then we're not funded the next time around, which, so it's kind of just rolling the dice on some of those grants, depending on how much money is expended at other districts throughout the state. So, so, so in the end, you know, not too much will change. Our building levels teams are still submitting requests. Our goals around addressing student mental health, you know, really are unchanged. We're going to continue to use that money to have expenses for training, covering increased mental health navigator services, for example, doing some of these things like community referrals, to the extent that we can have other agencies in and offer them something for sharing their information. As speakers, evidence-based SEL curriculum, such as Second Step, there's now new digital versions of that to, to improve on the delivery of those services in buildings and then, and their books to support staff development and other training opportunities. So these are all good things and it's nice not to have to go through that competitive grant process. Next on the list was suicide assessment training. We've had a couple of these over, over the years, but it's been a while since we've been with Prepare, who are the, kind of the national trainers for suicide assessment and training. We had a group of counselors, about nine, 10, and teachers, school psychs as well. So really it's good to get an update, a fresh set of guidance for that training. And then our next steps really are kind of taking our forms, updating the forms that we have within use in the district and then making sure that they're kind of aligned with our responses throughout the school district in the case of a student that might need a suicide assessment or we might need to talk to a family about a threat. Next, parent community engagement activities. Our counseling teams are really focusing on trying to engage with parents. You've seen all the wonderful things that they're doing throughout up and down these reports tonight. So there are a couple of things on top of this, our coffee and the counselors, coffee with the counselors happening at the intermediate school, locations out in the community, the parent workshop happening at the elementary school on November 9th. And the middle school and high school are also looking at doing some, you know, further opportunities to engage with families. Those are kind of to be decided at this point, but it's on the radar. And finally, just want to give an update that our Wisconsin, our school psychs are going to the Wisconsin School Psychologist Convention. That'll be held in La Crosse. Our own Katie Johnson is president of that agency right now and she will be, I believe, delivering some sort of address there. So that's a great look for Amory to be up on that state, stage. And there's just a lot of good things happening at that, training cognitive behavioral therapy, shaping behavioral and emotional competence, just to mention a couple. So that is on the 26th and 27th, so our school psychs will be out attending that training later this week.
All right.
I have a quick question, not for Brad, but for Paula. The, the last one, last thing on your slide said that LPO meeting was 8:30 PM, is that right?
It's 8:30, does it say PM? Oh, that should say AM.
AM?
Thank you for catching that. It should say AM.
It seemed kind of late for a meeting, unless it's a school meeting.
Yeah, no, it is AM.
Well, when you show up, you'll know.
Yeah, right.
And though that is the consistent time that they have in the year.
Can I, can I say something also?
Yeah, go ahead.
Brad, Kate, thank you. Please tell Katie thank you. I know grant writing is, at times, a miserable process and this thank you for your resiliency and your dedication to do it. It's not something, you know, you want to always do, but thank you for doing it. Appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you.
We get results. All right, anyone else? Okay, we will have our summer school report.
Good evening. I'm Laura Shogren. I'm the director of Amory Summer School and right now I'm experiencing the short calm between actual summer school and the preparation for summer school, which starts for me next month. That's when I start recruiting teachers. Our 2023 adventure was wonderful and the best part of this presentation is the lovely faces of the kids who you can see really do enjoy what we provide each summer. So if we take a look at what we accomplished this past year, there were 739 students who benefited from our efforts in providing educational opportunities during the summer. This included kids who were going from into 4K through kids who were going into 12th grade. We were able to support academic growth for students in 4K through kids going into ninth grade, primarily in reading and math. For middle school students, we expand that to English, so we're also helping them with their writing skills. We created 55 enrichment courses for students for grades K through 8 and the teachers that we have creating these courses are so very creative and engaging in what they provide for kids. So that is really something to be excited about. There were also so many relationships with teachers. A lot of kids got to meet teachers they would have later on in the school year. Kids got to maybe reconnect with teachers that they'd had in previous summer school years and they got to have time with friends. I heard a lot of kids in the hallway not knowing I was listening, saying, hey, this beats sitting at home. So kids were really enjoying their time at summer school. Looking ahead to next year, we of course have a lot of construction going on, so we had to do some planning early on for when summer school was going to happen. So in June, the academic and enrichment, enrichment sections for kids going into 4K through eighth, current eighth graders will be June 10th through 14th will be Week A and then the next weeks are June 7th, 17th through 21st, June 24th through the 28th. So that does give us a nice cushion of time between the last day of official school and the start of summer school, which we really do need some turnaround time there, so that's appreciated. Looking ahead to swimming lessons, we already have our spot-reserved New Richmond Center works out very well for us over the past few years. We will continue with them and during Weeks B and C, Monday through Thursday, we are going to continue having the afternoon swimming lessons. So students will be able to have, if they elect to, classes in the morning. They'll be able to have lunch at school. They'll be able to get on a bus and go to New Richmond and then come back and they will have a full day of programming. So it'll coincide with the weeks of morning summer school and we have found that attendance really is strong with having the programming both in the morning and the afternoon. The only thing happening in July, we hope, will be Pioneer School. Those plans haven't been finalized quite yet, but then in August, we will start up again August 5th, which is a little bit later than what we have done before, but it goes along with our plans for construction and remodeling. Week D will be August 5th through 9th and Week E, August 12th through 16th. Those two weeks, we also have swimming lessons reserved at New Richmond Center for the afternoons. Those will be Monday through Thursday. That works best because people tend to like to leave early for, for weekends, so we don't do swimming lessons on Fridays. Once again, that'll be 1 o'clock to 2:30 and will coincide with the morning classes. When we take a look at the differences between the 2022 and 2023 numbers, we see that the instructional minutes for 2022 were 3,137,420. It might be alarming to look at, okay, wow, we were down to 2,693,000, et cetera, in this year. So what was wrong? Well, nothing actually was wrong. Our official start date this year for the first day of school was August 28th. In previous years, we have been able to use some of those dates before September 1st as orientation days and legally, we could count those as summer school minutes. Because our official start date was August 28th, we didn't have that extra time that we could count for those students who were going, who were 4K through 12th grade. That's a lot of kids and a lot of minutes if you count a full day of school. So what I did is I, I took the amount of time that was designated for orientation in the 2022 year, subtracted it from the total instructional minutes for 2022 and you can see that not only were the minutes comparable, but we also had some extra minutes this last year, if we don't count the orientation. So it's not just Laura Shogren's lack. Looking ahead to next summer, we, teachers, administrators, everybody is going to have to have a little bit of grace for everybody else with everything going on. So we'll need flexibility as construction and remodeling will continue. We will need to continue to charge for swimming lessons. Last year was the first year we did that. I did not see a significant impact in registration by that change. Parents were okay paying that tuition fee. Of course, we do provide the transportation for that. So we will continue to charge for those swimming lessons and the capacity for swimmers in each session are going to be set at 96. This allows for 12 sections of eight, safe numbers for swimming lessons. We have found that we have a lot more stu-, we have had a lot more students registering in June and instead of having two 45-minute sessions that we run, we've had to split it into three groups, which really reduced the amount of instructional time. So we're going to set that cap, hoping that people will also use that August opportunity and be able to provide more lesson time for the students. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
What's the cost?
Um, I believe the tuition will be $25 this year. I do have to hear back from New Richmond about the absolute specifics. Any others?
You'll enjoy a few minutes of time off.
Yeah, I'm counting. I have a timer running.
Well, thank you so much. Well, we've got some informational items now and the weather cancellations. Yep, we do this, right?
Well, it'll be here soon enough.
What's the word?
It's not canceled today.
All right.
So we have got a couple of factors that we always use to determine whether we're canceling school due to the weather. Can we get here safely to school? Safe for our buses, safe for our student drivers, safe for our parents and they all have merit because they're all in vehicles driving this direction. In, in addition to that, can we get home safely? Now, last year, if you remember correctly, we had every version of precipitation known to man and unfortunately, many of the days, the timing was not great. If you're going to throw an ice storm at us at 6:45, we're sort of out of luck with being able to notify people in a timely fashion. Or if it doesn't do anything until 2 o'clock and then it's white-out, makes it pretty hard. And we had some of those situations where it was unsafe to get here, where it was unsafe to get home, but everyone was out on the road before it even occurred. Or didn't go out on the road. It happened during the school day and we had to go out. So it's tough based on the factors and based on the timelines. So this year, we have two days built into the calendar. In the past, we've had three, but we have a truncated schedule based upon our construction plans. So we have two snow cancellation days or weather cancellation days built in to our instructional minutes, meaning if we didn't make them up, we'd still be in compliance. We do not need to make up those first two. Anything after two will be a remote learning day. Obviously, that looks different at the middle school, high school, as opposed to the elementary intermediate school, but all the same, they will receive education. We have already sent the materials home at the elementary intermediate and middle school and high schools stand ready to provide lessons via the live stream of classes that we've gotten pretty good at. So we're ready to go ahead and provide instruction still. If possible, the decision to cancel school will happen the night before. If possible, the decision to cancel school will happen the night before. That's not always known. If we got a monster coming, a sort of a snowpocalypse kind of event, and people start dropping like flies, we'll drop two, but usually you don't know that. Our hope is to always make the decision by 6:15 a.m., so we can start pumping that message out in the variety of ways that we put it out there. District Office will work with Director of Transportation. Josh has been my man on the road. Sometimes he sends me pictures of his family truckster can make it through, then we're probably okay. If you've seen the family truckster, you'll understand why. And other members of the district team. Nina is always talking to me because her people are here at 6 o'clock. So it's really hard to get that all done before 6 o'clock. So the timeline, 6:15, is our hope always. School cancellation notification, all the primary contacts, you're going to get a text, you're going to get an email, and you're going to get a call. It's on all the local television stations. I think everyone in the room's old enough to remember the day of where you watched the television and waited for Amory to come across the screen and celebrate accordingly. We'll announce it on our social media platforms, and it's also listed on our website. Becky, Tracy, and I counted up one time, it's out towards 20 different ways that you're going to know, and about 15 of them, you don't even have to leave your bed to find out if you have your phone with you. So people will know. The only thing that we implore you to do is make sure your contact information is up to date. If it's not, then you might not know. So get that updated if you have not done so. Extracurricular activities, we'll work with Athletic Director Jeff Fern, and he's going to work with those around us. If it's a WIAA tournament event, they may just very well tell you, "I know you didn't have school, but you're playing your ballgame at 7:00. Make sure everyone's there." That has happened, because you have another game waiting for you. The outcome, the winner of that game, is waiting for you, and they want those games to follow along the same timeline. If it's out and out unsafe, we put our foot down a little bit, but typically, WIA has a pretty strong opinion about it. Typically, practicing, practices and games which occur the day of a school cancellation will also be canceled, but sometimes, we couldn't get to school, but by 7 o'clock at night, things are fine. It's just where we live. So it really depends on what's happening in regards to the weather. Questions that you might have?
Do we, temperature?
Yep, we've talked about that.
Yeah, do we have a cutoff?
We don't. What I've used, what I've used is sort of similar to our neighbors, because others are asking that same question. I just put together a text group for the nine, our eight neighbors and us, Unity and St. Cora Falls, and Ossio and the rest. So we had started talking about that, and there wasn't anyone that had an actual formal table, but the rules we typically use is negative 25 in temperature and negative 40 in windshield. But that's not a hard and fast rule written down anywhere. I know if you're at the bus stop, and it's negative 40, and you're there for 15 minutes, that's a problem. I get it. But we don't have a hard and fast rule. But cold's an issue as well. I think it was about three, four years ago, we had the vortex, the polar vortex in January. Didn't snow, but holy cow, was it cold. Yeah, we canceled some days there.
Okay, I was just wondering if there was that.
But we can adopt one. It's always, I mean, people, when you adopt something, remember the days of the Matrix, when you adopted, people are really watching it.
Yes.
It's negative 41 at my house, why are we at school?
Yes. Yeah, I was just wondering if there was that. I've heard, you know, I've always seen questions like, does the district have that? And then in regards to like our cancellation notifications, we have the all-call. Of course, it's always dependent on the quality of the contact information that we have, but does the district do a practice run, all-call?
Uh, we're not planning to do a weather practice call, but we have some notifications coming up that are going to sort of ferret out who hasn't updated their information.
And we've done some other, I guess not the all-call, but we've been doing some other notifications with other things, and we've been tracking Aaron House, or we've been tracking what's going on. Okay, so.
We will always get the, I didn't get the call, and they're usually not upset because they didn't know the notification, they just didn't get the call. It was like, great, thank you for telling us. Tell us who you are, we got to get the information right. And Aaron updates all of those.
Yeah.
But they get the message, because there's so many other ways that it comes out now.
Shaun, how, when we do have a remote learning day, how is our attend, like, how is our attendance?
I'll defer to these folks here, but I think we've done very well. I don't know who wants to answer. It looks different based on the size of the buildings.
Yeah, and the minimal times we've had to do at the high school, it's actually gone pretty good. We take attendance like a normal day, and if we don't hear from a reason why they can't be there, we mark them absent. We run a modified schedule that day. We don't run at the same exact times that they would during the normal day, because being online for a class for 80 minutes is really unreasonable. But we've put together a modified schedule. I know Thomas put together a modified schedule at the middle school, and my teachers have always reported back, you know what, that went way better than I expected.
Yeah, and at the middle school, our attendance has been actually very, very good on those days. I think it's partially because the kids are at home in the remote classes, and they're getting on, and they're talking to their friends, and interacting with the teachers. And again, they're shorter in times, but I, I thought the same thing. I was a little worried of what, how that would go, and I was very pleasantly surprised. Way better than attendance we had when we were under the COVID years, but just like everyone, we were really learning about doing that virtual learning. Virtual learning isn't as good as in-person learning, but it's better than not. And so it worked really well in our building.
It's better than adding days in June, I can tell you that much.
Yeah.
And when we do that, our staff is going to be, I know there was a time, there was a day that staff was called in, then we called them back out, because if it wasn't safe to travel for anybody, then they're, are we still good with having staff at home doing remote learning?
They're at home. Unless, if they can get here and they feel best being here, be here, but they're not required.
I had about 50/50 in my building last time. 50% came in just they felt it was easier to work, some just couldn't physically make it.
We've got quite a few Baldwin, Richmond, Somerset people, and some of those days would have been tough.
Yeah.
I was just, and again, I was just kind of wondering about maybe some of the kids, you know, due to some home life or some socioeconomic concerns, weren't able to have internet at their residence, or?
You're right, Joel, because connectivity is a huge issue, and the state ranked that as one of their top priorities. And what they have done is they've put pressure on counties to start hardwiring in homes, and I think you're seeing a lot more of that, because connectivity is huge. You can't connect, you're SOL in so many ways. And that's a huge problem.
We had some kids that were very good about advocating ahead of time, you know, we would make announcements even over the PA. Good chance we're going to be remote tomorrow, blah, 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 practiced in class. We did have some kids that reached out to us and just said, "Look, I don't have internet. No problem, we'll work with you, we'll get it figured out," and we took care of things, so.
You know, the other item that was just the magnificent surprise is how well the materials work that elementary and intermediate did. Staff have done an amazing job on that, and I'll let you guys speak to that.
Absolutely. So at the elementary and intermediate school, we are a one-to-one, meaning each child has a Chromebook. We don't send them home. Reasons for not sending them home is here, we have programs that monitor what they're looking, so when a student's on the device, our teachers are watching what they're looking at, just to ensure. We also have, obviously, our firewalls and our connectivity safety here. We recognize in, you know, K through 5, that a lot of learning is direct instruction. So teachers are explicitly instructing a student how to read, hands-on science, hands-on social studies. So we don't send devices home, so as Shaun just said, we actually send home packets that mimic or reflect the learning that's happening within the classroom. Those are really differentiated, so if a student is in title, there's books that fit their reading level. If they are in math title, they have, their work looks differentiated. Special education as well puts in learning materials to support those students. So a lot of thought goes into creating these packets. They're not generic for every kid, they're really tailored to where our students add in their learning. We send them home proactively, because of course, if the call comes in the morning, we might not obviously be able to get that pack at home in time. So we send them home proactively, and they're usually a couple days out. There's a great letter or sticker on the front that explains to parents what's inside, hide it in a safe place where you're going to remember it is, which was always my challenge. But it's been very well received. We want to be able to support our kids, but we also want to do it developmentally appropriately as well.
Absolutely. I just wanted to add to that, we go right through it, even to the specialists by Ed. Music art, they all put some activities in there to help grow that learning, so, and it's very well, like you said, very well thought out, and, and, yeah, minicked as much as they can for their school day.
I have probably been the point person for elementary, intermediate, and middle school in my own home with remote instruction, and I could say the best review of me, I'm really good at recess and lunch.
There you go.
So thank you for the teachers, because if not for them, I would be in trouble.
All right. If we were to do all of them remote, we'd get out early.
That is true. Are you making a motion, Joel? You might get some phone calls.
All right. Anything else? We'll go to our referendum, building and grounds update.
Okay. Well, it's gotten quieter at the high school. We're moving into the next set of classrooms. We have, again, remember, six, seven rounds of classrooms to get through by the end of the year. The big fireworks at the high school begin again next summer, when we have the math-science wing and the commons cafeteria, and that's going to be big work. Elementary school, you'll see a lot of outside work. We're trying to get that done before the weather turns full. We've been in the 50s and 60s, and we're okay. 30s is a little harder, but you'd be surprised, they'll work pretty much well below zero, or well below the freezing level. So we're wrapping up, we hope, in the next weeks, month, or so outside, and then that project's going to sort of rekindle itself again back in the late spring, early summer. It's quieter than it once was, but there's a ton of work still going on.
Yeah, I would say if ever any of you guys just want to go through and do a walk-in, come on, come on in, give me a call, whatever, and we'll walk you through, so it's, it's pretty impressive to see what's going on.
George gives us a monthly tour. Joe and Keith are on that committee. It's astounding what's occurred there. Some of the spaces that have been completely renovated and are now complete, you sort of don't even remember what it once was. It's amazing how good they've done.
Yeah, Josh is a good tour guide. I hadn't been over there since the construction started, so I stopped over on an in-service day and took full advantage of Josh's time, and he took me on a personal guided tour through the whole, the whole shebang. He really knows what's going on over there, and what's going to happen. He's got a nice map in his office that tells, tells him exactly when and what's next, and the crew is, it's really amazing to see the work that's been done over there. Really amazing.
Staff's been fantastic, and that's why we are still on, on target. We are on pace where we're supposed to be. Remember, we got in a month early at the high school, and that was a game changer. We might not be on time if not for that. We were in on basically May 1st. They weren't planning to be in until the first week of June.
We did give them the green light to do a couple other things to speed up the process. They're doing the restrooms outside of the auditorium right now. If you walk in the front, it's all partitioned off and blocked off, but that's going to save us some time, and they're going to be doing the art room area bathrooms ahead of schedule as well, so we'll just kind of flip-flop which bathrooms they're working on. And the kids have been great about it. We made the announcement.
It's been awesome.
Yeah, they were, they understand.
Yeah. If you look at the email with the Kraus-Anderson itinerary and what they're doing, if you go start looking through that, Aaron Hughes, the project manager, he's, he's kind of anal about the dates and what's happening. This day, George mentioned a sink was drawn, so that had to be redone, and so, I mean, they're really keeping their eyes dotted and their teeth.
And tremendous credit in district to George Sigsworth, because George is keeping an eye on this. He has a knowledge, a skill set, and an interest to do this, and I think he loves it, frankly. And he's, he's very, he's very good at it, and he's got a nickname for every person that's working over there, which is always fun. So it's been awesome. George has been a fantastic point person on this project.
I'm sure they've got nicknames for you, too.
Well, maybe, maybe so.
The one question I had too, just about the timeline of when they can work, is to 10 o'clock. Is that for city ordinance, or?
Uh, yeah, sure, the outside stuff, they follow the cities, city ordinance, and then the inside.
If they want to run a night crew, we'll take it. You know, like, I was just thinking, I mean, again, what a great opportunity to be in a building when no staff's there or anything like that, you can run all the wire you want.
They might have to pay their crews more, I think that might be the issue.
Oh.
Probably.
Yeah, I just saw, I just saw the documentation, it said you can only work from this time of this time.
I think that's part of it.
Yeah, they can, it's not on there, but there's a lot of weekend workers in as well, so they can manage that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's what's happening with referendum. It ain't over yet.
No, well. All right, next we'll go to action items.
Okay.
With our athletic facilities.
I put together a presentation here on many of these slides you've already seen before. It's sort of an amalgam of a variety of different meetings we've had. The first slide you'll see is followed by three subsequent slides that look just like this, just year by year, or borrowing amount by borrowing amount. So the furthest left is general obligation bonds for a $3 million borrowed, and the middle column is four, and then the far right column is five. So if you look at the next slide, you'll see a clearer, bigger version of the $3 million borrow. This is the same information, nothing's changed. The projected interest rate is, it's a 5.25, that we can never know for certain until we got to the point where we borrowed money. Note, in the year 2022, 23, you had an existing debt service of 231, that's where that number comes from, 231,000. In the present year, it's 99, so that does mean, you'll see it on the bar graph in a couple of slides, there's $132,000 in this budget that you're going to have to determine what to do with it. You can do a variety of things. And then we're at 55 for the next four years, and that gets you a $3 million borrow, if that's the arrangement that you entered into. The $4 million borrow is the same schematic, the numbers simply are bigger in the total column, because again, you're borrowing four as opposed to three, and your interest obviously is bigger with four than it is with three. And your numbers there hover right around the 340, 345 mark. Again, 231 is what you already have earmarked, so it's about 110, 120 more than that. And then the 5 million mark, again, same schematic, you just move your numbers forward, and we're looking now at about 420, 425, 430. And again, it's 231, and the distance from 231 to the 420, you'll see a little bit later, is approximately 200,000. So the bar graph that goes with this, and you saw this bar graph at our last meeting, if you follow the various shades, first, the black is the existing debt service, again, 231, 99, then 55, 55, 55, 55. The, the next color up from the black is the $3 million borrow, then the next bar is a $4 million borrow, and then the high mark is the $5 million borrow. And it's simply a graphic depiction of the numbers that you previously saw on the previous three slides. And again, I highlight the dashed bar in the 23, 24 school year. That's the hypothetical 132,000 one-time expense. What do you do with that? Because if you do nothing, you just pay 99 this year and do 132 with, and then the debt will fall off into 55 when you do nothing in any of these bars, if you chose not to do the project. Okay, so here's what it would look like if you borrowed $3 million. If you borrowed $3 million, your annual payment would be approximately 260. It depends on the year, the way that they distribute debt over time, it is an exact same number every year. That's not the way it works, so you use your existing line item at 231, and then from the 2017 referendum, building and grounds money, you, you take 29,000 of the 700,000. The same formula, if you will, gets you to a $4 million borrow. If you had 345,000 in a year, 231's already there, and then use 114 from referendum money, and then the $5 million borrow, it's 430, 231, and 199. That's how you get to the 5 million. Now remember, your project costs are 4, 5, and 6, and you'll see how that has arrived at here in just a moment. And please interrupt me at any point if you have any questions. I'll just finish this slide, and then you can, I'll turn it over to you, how about that? This is a, a harkening back to where we were with the 2017 referendum. The green portion of the pie is the building and grounds money. It's titled Maintenance and Security. Building and grounds is sort of, it's been interchangeably used. It's $700,000, and that's money we've used every single year since the 17, 18 school year. We've presented here at the board at least a dozen times what we've done with that money. So what we would do here is if you borrowed, say for instance, $5 million, it would be 500,000 as opposed to 700,000. And 500,000 is sufficient for what we need to have on hand in order to address building and grounds needs. So questions that you might have up to this point in time? And if not, I can trek out?
Um, right now, for the referendum contingency, where do we sit with our referendum?
The referendum contingency is somewhere between 750 and 1.25 million right now. Those are Kraus-Anderson's estimations.
Are we, like, I don't know what to say this, because like, you have to knock out what or something like that, but are, are we below budget?
We are under budget.
How about how much?
Approximately 750 to 1.25.
That's the full contingency?
That's the contingency, the way I understand it from Kraus- That's the contingency, the way I understand it from Kraus-Anderson. Gary Ziffco from Kraus-Anderson is the point guy on that. But that's the number that they're sharing with me and with George.
And that's why we're using the $1 million kind of as a target, right? Because it's somewhere in the middle.
John said to me, if we were sitting here in January and February, I would tell you with near certainty that you are 750 to 1.25. I'd say right now, you're pretty close on that, even sitting here in October.
So, where we're at in regards to funding and what we paid for already for our referendum for the schools, can you show me that?
Can you, the expense breakdown?
Like John or you, can you show me that?
Yes, yes. You should actually have that in your board packet. There's a report that's, it would be.
It's in board book.
It's in, it's in board book, but we can print a copy of it for you. I actually do it every month. I reconcile our Fund 39 and our Fund 49. I reconcile everything, so it's on there as far as what our liquidity is.
It's just not in this presentation.
It's just not in this presentation.
But it is there.
And then, how much of the 2017 referendum are we using 700?
To do this, the high mark would be 199. And the total 2017 money is 1.9 million. And in theory, if you look at the verbiage in the 2017 referendum, you could put 1.9 million towards just building and grounds if you wanted to. But what we have done is we have used the other colors for the other expenses. And we've never deviated from that, and we've always been okay with the 700,000 that's there. Then we got lucky with ESSER money because when things broke, is right when we got ESSER money, the HVAC system at the elementary was a perfect example of that. The heat pump situation at the middle school was a perfect example of that. That timing worked perfect, but we've never been to the point where that 700,000 wasn't sufficient. ESSER money certainly helped along, but remember during ESSER money, we also got no state aid. So, it was sort of an offset in the budget. That has always been sufficient, and our estimation is it's going to be more than sufficient now because we're tackling nearly all, if not all, of the number ones in our two oldest buildings. And if we have something that's big ticket, I met with George this morning, I don't see it. I certainly could be wrong, but I don't see it. Kraus-Anderson doesn't see it. We constructed this referendum to hit the number ones. That's why we are in the shape we are in with this.
So, you're just earmarking up to $200,000 onto the 700 to go directly towards the facility stuff, leaving another 500,000 to be used on other.
Correct.
Building and grounds.
And other things will happen, certainly. Number twos will become number ones eventually. That is a reality.
Thank you for documenting number four, too.
Which, what are you referring to?
The fourth one, pay for the artificial turf.
Oh, okay, yes.
Again, some of the negative comments I had was just, again, was simply, why are we doing a 20-year loan on a 15-year turf field?
So, we met with Baird Financial, John did, actually. I was heading to another location, but Baird Financial stopped in. And that was Debbie from Baird Financial's suggestion is, if you're concerned about the life of the loan being longer than the actual project, and you have to redo something that isn't even paid for yet, pay for it first. In the first eight years with the $5 million borrow, you would pay for the turf in that time because turf's about three, three and a half million. It's done. Then that logic sort of goes out the window. Yeah, you certainly can improve things that aren't paid for yet. I redid my main floor last year, and my house isn't paid for yet. But I like it, I like the feeling of it being paid for, and now we're fixing it. And in this scenario, if it's paid for in eight, and you're fixing it in year 12 to 15, it's been paid for for four to seven years. So, that was a very good suggestion, a different way of looking at it.
She pulls the money out of one pocket, so she can.
She's smarter than me.
I know.
So, a different approach.
It's how you look at it, but.
So, a different approach may be, and you'll see this here. You've seen a zillion design options. We've seen design options since March, and there's been a lot of conversation about design options. You're not choosing a design tonight, you're not choosing one in November, you're not choosing one even in December. We may have to meet on that if that conversation continues, and it has. What you're choosing to do, not even tonight, but most definitely in November, is choosing a borrowing amount. And clearly, if you choose a borrowing amount of $5 million, it gives you the most options. I mean, obviously, it would. So, what does that mean when you look at it in reality? Before we get to that, this slide I cannot emphasize enough, and I know that not everyone believes it to be true. I'm here to tell you, it is exactly what you see on the screen. The money used to finance this project is straight from the budget. There is no tax impact. This is not a referendum, we are not Baldwin. Baldwin spent $12 million on an athletics upgrade. That was approved via a referendum with the Baldwin community. If the money's not used to finance this project, the 231 will simply be spent on something else within the district budget. That's 231,000. No programs, no staff, no resources. Nothing's being cut to come up with the money to do this. It's already accounted for in the budget via the mechanism that you saw with Fund 38 and the math that you saw to achieve those borrowing amounts. There's no tax impact whatsoever. So, what can you do with three, four, and five million dollars? So, we talked about this, and then I'll get to my list. Contingency money is built in from the 2022 referendum, potentially approximately a million dollars for athletics upgrades. How do you get contingency money? In essence, your estimated cost of work actually is more than what the work cost. And what we have found is our estimates were higher than what the actual cost came to be. Now, knock on wood, this is a knock on wood moment. We haven't run into some buzzsaw, crazy, wild, expensive surprise. That hasn't happened yet. When we tore the high school apart, we thought that that was a possibility. It is, after all, a 50-year-old building, and we're digging into the elementary, too. You could bump into those types of scenarios, and we haven't. So, that's where you end up with contingency money. The 2022 referendum money can be used for athletic facilities because the referendum approved by the public allows for site work on the district campus. And much of what you're talking about with athletics is just that, site work. It's not turf. We're not using 2022 money to pay for a turf field. We're not using to pay for a natural grass field either. But what you can do, you can put up lights at the football field because that is an eligible expense, and lights are not cheap. So, you can use that money to do that. That's the in, so to speak, via the referendum. Questions before I get into the five, four, and three?
When we're talking about lights at the stadiums, we're talking about LED lights, to upgrade the LED lights because we currently don't have them. Is that correct?
We do not have LED at football, no.
Is there any kickback from the energy company? Any incentives to put in the LED lights? Or, I mean, besides the cost savings that would, from running them, is there more that the energies would allow or excel?
There'll be some rebates for sure. I've never, I mean, athletic field lighting is something I haven't been part of yet, but every LED in this district that we put in, there's been some type of rebate. So, we would take advantage of that. Big savings out there will basically be, we'll probably spend a eighth or a quarter of the energy to run an LED light compared to those, I'm guessing, Mercury Allies or whatever they are. But the candle power out there is, they burn a lot of energy.
So, the next three slides are a $5 million borrow, a $4 million, and a $3 million borrow. Remember, it's not actually five, four, three, but six, five, four because you're putting in a million-dollar referendum contingency.
She smoked it, didn't she?
She did. Look at that. All right, thank you, Becky. Before I say anything about this. Ryan is here as our football coach. I'm just pleased we have a field at all based on our last game because when I came by on Monday morning, I was a little concerned with what we would see. That was quite a scene. The picture spoke for itself clearly. Ryan can tell you the stories, I'm sure. That was nothing we've seen very often here, quite a scene. So, with a $6 million facility, and I know this is going to be redundant, and I'm not going to read everything to you. I'd not want to read slides typically, but you simply have more options. Just some of the highlights, you can do whatever you want to the football field. You can leave it as natural grass. You could have a turf. You could do nothing at all. Baseball, same thing. You can do lights, LED lights or not, do LED lights. You can do an eight-lane, a nine-lane, or a 10-lane track. You can move soccer or leave soccer. You can upgrade softball, or you can leave softball alone. You can add parking lots or not add parking lots. You can do major walkways or not do major positive improvements in walkways. You simply have more options with $6 million. I think that just goes without saying. When you get to the $5 million facility, you can see the list is short, and obviously, it would be. If you're installing artificial turf or natural grass at the football field, or you can leave it as is, but no, if you're doing artificial turf or natural grass at the football field, you're not doing it likely at the baseball field because you simply don't have the money to do it. You don't have visiting team bleachers if you do this proposal at 5 million. You simply don't because you don't have the money to do it. You can move soccer or leave soccer. You will not have LED lights at the football field. You will not have LED lights at the baseball field. You can add a track, a new track, or you can leave the track as is. You will only have minor upgrades for baseball, and you'll only have minimal walks and plaza upgrades. My opinion, if you're going to do a $5 million borrow and, or a $5 million facility and leave the new grass field as is and miss the home season, my recommendation is you don't touch the field at all and play at home because missing a season for a grass surface, it might not be worth the trouble that it would create. We don't have a location to play. Could you? Could we relocate? Could we still upgrade the field? You certainly can. That would simply be my two cents. With a $4 million facility, it's, the options, there are some. But really, what it boils down to is you're doing an artificial turf or natural grass football field, and you're adding a track around it, and you're moving the soccer field to play on it. You're not really doing anything else besides that. You're not upgrading baseball much, you're not doing much of anything to softball. No visiting team bleachers, walkways, park plazas. You're not really doing much of any of that. It's really just the football field. If you're wanting to move the football complex itself, 6 million is the only way to do that. 4 million will not cover that expense. 5 million will not cover that expense. 6 million would be the only way to go. And that could be in a variety of locations on school campus. My recommendation, and then I'll turn it over to you to ask questions or have conversation, is to use Fund 38, borrow 5 million, pay back over 20 years, use a million-dollar in referendum contingency, pay the debt through the existing line item in the building and grounds money from 2017, pay for the newly added artificial turf or natural grass surface first. So, that would be done in your first eight to 10 years of debt service. That's my recommendation, but I don't have a vote. That's but a recommendation. So, I'll turn it over to you for questions, or if you want to have conversation, it's up to you.
I appreciate you humoring the natural grass surface still in your, in your options.
I aim to please.
Thank you. I know what it is, but thank you anyway.
That's why we love you, Shar.
So, are we just motioning for resolution?
That's, well, the resolution, if it was to occur, is in November. I put this on as an action item in case you wanted to take action. If it was on here as informational, you just couldn't do it. So, I put it on as, and if you want to do nothing tonight, you say table it. But if you want to do a motion for a borrow, you could say, I would like to make a motion to do X.
This gives us another meeting to talk before all of a sudden something's going to happen.
Because a resolution's a resolution, and it's, that's the final, that's a final deal. That's a legal document you sign in the paper, and it's happening.
Does this start the window for the?
The petition window does not start until you post it in the Emory Free Press. And that would be on Tuesday, the 28th. You'd post the resolution in the Free Press. Then it's a one-month window. This does not do that.
Is there any benefit of approving anything tonight versus next month?
I believe there's a benefit because it allows the resolution to be drawn up.
Yeah, and also keep in mind, the interest rate's not going to fluctuate too much between now and when it gets locked in and closes in April. But giving Baird more time to go out and do scenarios and that sort of thing is always going to be a massive help.
So, there's a benefit.
There's a benefit because they need to draw up a resolution.
Versus next month.
Yeah, if you say we want to go to resolution at the November 20th meeting, they're not going to have that turned around instantly. That takes a couple of weeks to turn around. That's legal document, 150-page guy that shows up is a deal. It's a big deal.
I've had a lot of conversations with folks in the public, and we all agree that something needs to be done. I've had very few people suggest that we don't do anything. I personally don't like the idea of making a decision guaranteeing that contingency's going to be there because you haven't unveiled the big hairy beast that could be lurking. I'm ready to vote personally, and I'm interested in taking that higher option and praying that the contingency comes in. But if we take that higher option, it at least gets us into a $4 million plan or a $5 million.
Gets you into a $5 million plan.
If there's no, if the contingency's not there, right?
It's minimum five if you borrow five.
I mean, basically, we have a half-million-dollar contingency already, and that's our, the rest of our 700,000.
Right.
So, I mean, we know we've got that. Now, whatever comes after that would be, you know, so, worst-case scenario, the contingency of their gas between 750 and 1250 is 500,000. We still got the million-dollar contingency to go.
I'm sure Kraus-Anderson, if they're saying 750 to 1.25 million, they're going to say that with a pretty good level of confidence.
Well, they've tore into everything, basically, that.
Other than math-science, they have.
Yeah, science lab, but those are classrooms, too.
Correct.
Yeah, there's a running list of contingency items if everything worked out very well, and a lot of that stuff is on there. So, they just become priorities. And there's, there's a pretty good-sized contingency there with the added number of things came in better than, you know, were thought. We had some really competitive prices, so.
Has most of the big-ticket items been purchased already?
The surprise would be if 750 to 1.25 doesn't happen. That would be the surprise now.
Right.
We are in very good shape.
I just don't like to make a decision based on the fact that we think it's going to be there.
I don't, but the 5 million isn't a gas. The 5 million's a known entity if that's what you choose to do.
Yep, yep. And with that, I would make a motion that we move forward with the $5 million option.
Yes, I'll second it.
Everybody's clamoring to do this.
So, you just want to look at doing the 5 million and not this, and not the six?
No, no, no.
5 million is the six.
Borrow five.
With the idea that hopefully you get that contingency, makes it the six.
I just want to be clear what you're looking at as far as, so that everybody's clear what you're actually thinking. So, we're basically going to go to all in?
A $6 million facility.
Yep.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we're going to borrow the 5 million.
I'm going to make a motion we borrow the $5 million.
Because contingency is not.
Yeah, you can't make a motion on a contingency.
Right, I just want to, I want to make sure that he, that everybody understands what he's talking about.
Correct.
So, Steve has made the motion. Joe is second to borrow 5 million. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're all sunk now, aren't we?
There you go. Way to move that along.
Well, you know, the fan in the cupboard out there in the science lab.
They're all the same way.
The fan in the cupboard has served us well for 10 years.
There's a fan, right?
It's character.
Yeah.
That's one thing.
It won't be there long.
Not the most efficient route.
You know, I do have to say, in none of these plans did we talk about getting poor Tracy a nice camera cover for her.
And awning for rain.
And awning, and maybe a ledge so she doesn't have to hang out the window to livestream the games. I'm just saying.
They still give things to you every time.
I'm just saying that the next time when we start talking about what, like, what we're really going to get here, Tracy needs to be in our livestream.
One of those umbrella hats.
Let's just hope for 1.26 million.
Only been here 33 years. Thank you, Tracy.
Well, that means you're here for another 33, right?
That's right.
Yeah, you don't want that.
I know, the news this morning, that gal's been driving a school bus for 45 years.
I saw that.
I sounded like, wow. And she has no plan to quit.
She'll be 90 and still driving the old school bus.
Yeah, kids ask when she's going to quit, and she says, when you graduate.
She's probably going to quit then.
This is the Kickstarter. All right, John, now you want to borrow more money?
All right, yeah, I was going to say, it's kind of fun asking to borrow money after borrowing money.
Back to follow.
But this is a little bit different. This is not a loan. There is not a tax impact whatsoever, just like the last one. What this is, is this is to cover cash flow. In school finance, a lot of times, unfortunately, the state of Wisconsin aid dispersments and property tax dispersments do not align with when the district has expenses. So, for instance, in the month of July and August, and then specifically in the month of November, cash flow starts to become a very large anxiety-ridden factor just simply because aid doesn't start. You're going to certify the levy tonight, but we're not even going to start seeing that until December. And then we're not going to see it realized in its entirety until January, February. Similarly, state aid and equalization aid doesn't start trickling in until December as well. So it leaves us with a big gap in the month of November, and then at the end of the fiscal year as well. We, it's not until August that we get our summer taxpayer levy increases as well. So this document right here, and I will preface this by saying there is other options that hopefully we get to a point where we don't have to do this, but something like 87% of school districts in the state of Wisconsin do have to do some sort of short-term borrow. So this document that's up on the screen right now and is in your your packets as well, what this is, it's not a loan document. It is a line of credit. So essentially, what it is, is you're authorizing us to borrow on a short-term basis upwards of no more than $2 million. And that comes and goes much like a savings account that you pay interest on instead of earn interest on. So the interest rate for this one is no different than it was last year at 3.25%. What that looks like at the end of the year, if you're using your line of credit really responsibly, like we have here in the school district of Amory, is at the high side, we've paid $3,900 in interest. On the low side, we've paid $2,700 worth of interest, which will be this year, and the average is around $3,100 total in interest. But what that does allow us to do is keep the lights on, pay our employees without having to pull our hair out and be anxiety-ridden every year. So this request right here that you see in front of it, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but it is no different than it is every year. It's $2 million. The maturity date is October 31st, and the first dispersment wouldn't happen until closing on November 2nd.
I understand why you're doing this, but I would like to be in at 13%.
Yeah, and and there is some other mechanisms. Again, being that this is my first year sitting behind the desk, everything's a first for me. My goal is to always be in defeasance and always be ultimately not having to pay interest on short term. So there are a couple of options that we're going to be looking at between now and the next time we have this conversation next fall.
All right.
Pretty straightforward to make a motion that we accept the proposal as presented. Second.
Dale, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold on, there we go.
All right, now the next one, which is another fun conversation, but this is arguably the most critical part of my job, which is going to be certifying the tax levy. So the presentation that I have in front of you, these are real numbers. There's many different reports that lead up to it. It kicks off with our annual aid certification, which is a preview, and it's actually a summary of our Fund 10 expenses, revenues, all sorts of goodies from the previous fiscal year. That then goes into a calculation to calculate our equalization aid and general aid from the state of Wisconsin. Once we get our third Friday September FTE count, it all goes into a calculation, and it sets what our revenue limit authority is. We take that. We also wait until we get our October 1st equalized property value, and then the calculation comes across as what our total levy amount will be. So I have to apologize the best way. This is the best snapshot of these reports. However, the current year is what highlights. So Becky went ahead and added that red ring. So we are in budget year 22 or 2324, and it is on the far right. So as you can see, Fund 10, our general fund, 8.475 million and some change. Our non-referendum debt service, our Fund 38, as we've been talking about, as we talk about the athletic facilities, is $99,731. Gives us a total general fund tax levy for the year of $8,574,889. Then we talk, start talking about our referendum-approved debt service, which is really spread out between three, or two referendums, excuse me. Our big one that we're going through, and then the additional one from 2017, that's $2,595,975. And then our community service or our Fund 80 as well, levy of $104,000. Where this leads us to is a total of $11,274,864. Now, this number is a number that we have spoke about during the annual meeting and during our budget hearing. It did decrease by about $300,000 from the forecast when we were at the annual meeting. If you call back to that, I said it's likely to change as time goes on. So the next slide, this is just a tax levy by municipality, and I have to just play me a culpa here. This is actually not official. The state, because it's the, it's today's the day, they updated the distribution percentages, and so I do have them up on my screen. The number is accurate, but the distribution percentages are off by about 1% depending on what the municipality is. But essentially, it looks similar to the year before. There wasn't any one municipality that had a 50% increase in their levy percentage to distribution year over year. So if we go to the next slide, why is our levy higher than it was in previous years? Well, it's simple. You had an 18% increase in our equalized property value. So that's the driving factor behind the percentage of school funding that comes from your tax levy versus equalization aid. If your property value would have decreased, the burden would have decreased from the taxpayer, and the more burden would have been put on the state, essentially. So then our mil rate, this is where you can really get a good feel for what the financial health of the district is. And if you take a look at that number on the bottom right, once we put our increase, our 18% increase in equalized property value into that equation, we are now at $6.82. And as of the most recent spreadsheet that I saw, the state average is still well over $9. So we are sitting pretty. And the last slide on this presentation, this is just kind of if we stay going where we're going. This is kind of what the the image, what it looks like over the next five years. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise.
So it's an it's an action item. You're adopting the budget, and you are approving the levy, and that's up to you to do, but it is an action item.
I would make a motion we approve the 2023, 2024 budget levy and mil rate.
And the second?
The second.
Steve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There we go.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Meredith.
No pressure.
I get to go up to the microphone?
No, Miss.
She's asking for money, though.
No, she is not.
I'm not asking for.
No misspeaking. Be very careful. I have told them where you're going. No misspeaking.
I get to just wave my arms and blow my whistle.
Don't want to tell everyone tonight you're going to Fargo.
No. So our band always goes on a trip every four years. The last trip was actually three years ago because it was a 2020 trip. So it got delayed a couple of times because of COVID. But we did go with the that group of kids. So now it is time to go on our next trip, which will be December 24. We are planning to use our Bob Rogers Travel Company, which we've used the last three trips and been very happy, and it's been a great experience with them. So who's attending is next year's high school band, which is current eighth through 11th graders and color guard students. We usually have about one chaperone per eight students, so probably 10 to 12 chaperones, depending on gender and whatnot. And then myself and my family. Our itineraries, locations, and payments are still kept a little bit secret for our surprise announcement on January 22nd at 6 o'clock in the high school auditorium. So at that meeting, we'll be announcing all of those details to our families and students and and going from there. So I'm here to answer questions that I can answer and hope for approval on this trip.
Don't ask her where we're going. Don't put the screws to her.
Oh, put him on a bus again. That was fine.
There are stories, lots of stories.
No.
I did share with them in closed session, so they are approving. They know the destination.
I'll move to approve the band trip for 2024, to wherever that may be.
Fargo.
Fargo.
Don't you know?
Late December.
No offense to people that love Fargo.
Here it is, such a beautiful day. It's only Florida out there.
Well, they got stuck in Texas once, didn't they?
They did.
Yeah, and they had, I think, use a gym floor to sleep.
That is true.
I've heard a lot of stories.
Yes, yes. And the second?
Second.
Dale?
Thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Don't be jumping the gun here. You didn't hear the whistle yet, did you?
Thanks, Meredith. Happy travels.
Oh, and we got a Spanish.
This one, you know where they're going.
Yeah.
Hi there, I'm Miranda Verhean. I'm the the French teacher at the high school. Myself and the Spanish teacher Cynthia Johnson will be taking a group of 38 students to Europe. We're going to hit a couple of countries, departing from Minneapolis. And we're going to start in Barcelona, doing a lot of fun things there. We took a trip two years ago now, and we went to Barcelona. We're seeing a lot of the same things, which will be very exciting, one of which that I'm personally excited for is Gaudi's Sagrada Familia. Sorry if I butchered pronunciation, but a beautiful church that they are actually finishing the final tower of four in a month here. It's coming up very soon. The whole church is supposed to be finished in, I believe, 2026 to commemorate the 100-year passing of Gaudi, who was the original architect. So pretty excited about that. From there, we're going to go into the south of France. We'll be going to Provence and then down to Nice, going to some, hopefully some lavender fields there, but definitely going to a parfumerie where they make perfume. We're also going to Monaco, which is considered a country. It's the second smallest. It is a Francophone country, so we'll see some French there. The the native language, Montagnask, is actually a very weird mix between French and Italian. So it'll be kind of cool for the French students to to see those parallels. And then from there, we are going to Italy. We'll be going to Florence, seeing the Leaning Tower. And then we'll be going to Rome as well, where we'll see the Vatican City, also technically a country, the smallest. So it's pretty cool. We'll be not only seeing five countries over there, but the two smallest of them. And as well as the Sistine Chapel. After that, Day 11, we return to Minneapolis. The price I have on here, that was as of like two or three weeks ago. A lot of our students enrolled a little earlier, and they were able to save about $200. And that into, or excuse me, that includes the round-trip airfare, hotel stays, both dinner and breakfast daily. The students will be responsible for their own lunch, but we'll have some free time where they can explore and try some different things of their choosing. This tour also includes the guided sightseeing, whether that's just our main tour guide, who is with us the whole time, or some local tour guides. Attractions, as we see on the itinerary, and some, our bus driver, any drivers or transportations that we would need apart from getting to and from the airport. That's something that we'll need to talk about. But yeah, really excited. Like I said, 38 kids. We actually had to cap it just because that's a lot of kids to take to Europe. But we are departing March 13th, coming back the 23rd. We're super excited. We just had our first monthly meeting with the students to prep them on how to be safe while abroad, what to be responsible for, you know, like where do we keep our passports and my money and all that fun stuff. The kids want to know what they should pack for clothes, and what kind of food are we going to eat and all those fun things. So I'm getting a bunch of questions right now. But yeah, it should be a great time. Any questions?
Yeah, so we generally have travel insurance available to students, correct?
Yes.
And what does the travel insurance cover? You know, like a sudden death in the family, those kind of things, immediate family. But with, I can think as Marjorie, Margie put it, that we're living in chaos, and there's a lot of travel warnings now for Americans abroad, not just in the Middle East, but everywhere abroad. If things were to become more escalated, there were travel advisories. Does insurance cover that or not?
So that's something that we're currently monitoring with the company. They will have their own, you know, like do not travel or travel. There are two travel options that students could choose, one of which is a cancel for whatever reason. So if they didn't feel personally comfortable, they could cancel. But yes, it does cover certain things, and one of which is terrorist tax. I know that's a big conversation right now, so. Good question.
As a board member, I think it's always been my first concern is for the safety of our kids, safety of our students. This this trip, I've never had a thought about denying this trip to go. I think that everybody does take their own risks. This is a risk that every family has to decide for themselves. I also think that families do get caught up in, but my kid really, really wants to go, and it's really hard for me to say no when all of their friends are going. But I I want to voice my, I have, I have very, I have a lot of concerns.
And that's understandable. We just had that conversation last week. You know, do we travel? How close we are, we monitoring this? Again, like you said, it is a concern, not just in the Middle East, but all over. So that's something that we are watching daily, pretty much.
This trip is soon, so we're not talking 2025. This trip is less than six months out.
Correct.
So how how many chaperones per student or?
We're at a one to six right now.
One to six?
Yeah, and we'll most likely stay that way.
Is it all bus or train, too?
I believe it's mostly bus. Yep, last time we did have some train, but a lot of, well, I mean, other than from Barcelona to Provence, the trip is not that long. I mean, you know, with the stops in between, so most of it will be train.
Was there any talk of possibly postponing this trip to 2025?
Not as of now. This was something that we just recently started talking of like a week or two ago.
I would assume all the families, I mean, they're aware of potential risks, right?
Yes, and we have our first parent meeting next Monday that I will be, will be addressing this.
And you've been with this company before on other trips?
No, so this is our first time. Before COVID, we were traveling with a much smaller company that unfortunately had to let go a bunch of staff because of COVID. We traveled with a different, yet very comparable company last time, EF. However, we had some issues when we were trying to come back, and we were not very impressed with how they handled things. This is a very, very comparable company to that of EF. Offers a lot of the same things. They're still pretty bigger, so they have a lot of resources and help, which we did not get last time.
Yeah, we had kids returning back all over the seven days later.
It was a rough time, so we we decided to try this one. We had talked to many people who have traveled with them. So far, it's been a lot better. When we have questions, we get answers within, I don't know, two to five hours rather than two weeks. So so far, much better.
Is this itinerary similar to the last trip, or you're visiting new places?
New places this time. Yep, so last time we started in Paris, and Barcelona was the same, but now we're going to the south of France and really.
All right, what do you think?
Well, I would make a motion we approve the trip. There's a risk. Families would be aware of that. There's, you know, the last trip or try last trips, we've had risks. I don't know, I guess I would leave it up to the fam. I would let them have the kids and families have the option, and if they so choose to go or not go, that's up to the families, I think, so. So I would make a motion we approve 2024 high school French-Spanish student trip.
And the second?
I'll second.
Joe, all those in favor say aye.
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 Hold on, there we go. You're on your way.
Thank you.
Have a night.
Yep.
Thank you.
There's five more spots left in the gates, right?
Oh, she said, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I was in the Vatican in March. 35,000 people a day went through the Vatican.
I was.
Crazy cool, though.
In Vatican Square, it's the most perfect architectural place I've ever been in my life.
It's the coolest.
It's perfection, it's amazing. It's, you could just sit there all day long and marvel at how it was even constructed. It's amazing.
I saw that Pompeii's on here, and they're not visiting Pompeii. That was my favorite part of Italy, it's too bad they're not going.
All right.
Yeah. Please, I go back.
Yeah, next time. Next time.
Are you excited, Josh?
Darn right I am.
All right.
All right.
That doesn't make me a high school principal, I hope.
Now, now it's time for me to ask you to follow through with the state mandated early college credit program on the Start College Now program. I will just let you know that we've never had more kids participating in this program. Um, I went through and tabulated things. We have 18 different kids who would like to explore some opportunities to take college classes this spring, um, for a variety of different reasons, but we certainly support these kids in their endeavors, and, um, a lot of them have really great career plans. A lot of them have been developed through our ACP programming, and these kids are getting a jumpstart on their future, so I'm very proud of them.
Good sales pitch, by the way.
Joe, you want to move for that?
Please.
All right, and the second?
Second.
Charles, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. Next. Donations. Wow.
Okay. The first donation is a donation of extra clothing for Lean Elementary from Ja, from Jason and Nikki Lanfer. Anonymous donation of $500 to the elementary school barn dance event, which just occurred this past Friday. Uh, thank you to the Amory Family Restaurant, uh, for the meals provided to the Lean Elementary teaching staff during evening parent teacher conferences. Power up, thank you for donating the snacks for the Lean Ele, Lean Elementary Family Math Night and for the Lean Elementary Barn Dance. First Lutheran Church, thank you for the donation of school supplies to the intermediate school. Donald Bottelson, thank you for the donation of pumpkins to our high school business students. The pumpkins were used to evaluate a scraper tool that students learned about on an episode of Shark Tank. Students investigated the product price promotion, target market, pro, product claims, and performance of the scraper. They also developed advice they would give the company owner regarding the product and financing. See, they carve pumpkins at the high school too.
Okay, that was a really creative lesson.
Yes.
Figure out how to carve pumpkin.
Without or not?
To tie it, right, to tie it into media.
Thank you for the donation of $300 to the District's Angel Fund from a worn again thrift shop. And as always, many thanks for your generosity and support.
Wonderful. And a motion for that?
Some will.
Charles?
Many thanks.
Second?
Second.
There you go. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And again, they need a round of applause. Thank you. Thank you. All right, next up, we have personnel.
Personnel, we have new employee and extracurricular contracts for Brittany Dusick, a food server, Caleb Fremling, 8th grade boys' basketball assistant coach, Josh Graham, 7th grade boys' assistant basketball, uh, coach, Jen Melberg, 8th grade girls' basketball head coach, Bridget Perranto, is that how you say it, food server, Justin Shu, 7th grade girls' basketball assistant coach, reassignment of Deb Anderson from intermediate school title, from intermediate school Title I to kindergarten, Jenna Kaiser from 1st grade to intermediate school Title I, a food server, Tina Wagner moving into a cook position, resignations for Jeremiah Fisk for 7th grade math, Alexandria Lilienfeld, kindergarten teacher, and Jennifer Winchell, cook.
All right. A motion to accept personnel items?
I'll make the motion.
Steve? Second?
Second.
Charles? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? There we go. We don't need a closed session, so a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I'll second.
Charles? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries? No. Good night.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.